In the HJ Paulus Center. This meeting was posted according to open meetings. And we will get started. Go please stand for our education chief.
I'm the fellow who gathered here tonight. Give thanks to your humble and righteous name. We ask now God if you would bless our school board, our parents, our students, and our employees. God, we ask tonight that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and that they go through the process. God, we ask now that you continue to bless this school district. Bless everyone here tonight. We thank you for every blessing you give us. We ask it in the most powerful name we know. In Jesus' name.
This evening, we have Bay City Junior High students. We hope they can do some work.
We've got a student council for junior high officers and our staff sponsors, Mrs. Lynn Winkle and Mrs. Salmons.
Come on in, welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're gonna move right along to good news today. Does anybody have any good news to share from the board that they've seen or heard?
So, no means is this good news, but I don't think we need to go by without at least acknowledging that we lost probably the biggest black hat football fan that we've ever had, Simon Soto. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Say we love it.
Yes, I agree. I agree. For me, I would say I was able to attend Tenny Holmes Spotlight. It's about this month. But it was fantastic. It was great to be on the campus and see what was going on, seeing the teachers in action with students, seeing the things that are happening. Thank you for your work, Mrs. Flores, and for your team. Great things are happening and it's evident and I appreciate the work that went into that, to plan it and to pull people in. And I hope that those just continue to grow because I think it's such a fantastic opportunity for community members. We had parents, we had the mayor, we had all kinds of community members there. But just an opportunity for people to see really what is happening inside the walls of our schools and Bay City ISD. So, I know there's another one coming up that Lynn Roberts, I can't tell you the date off the top of my head, but I'm sure community facial drop. So, thank you for hosting and thank you, Bridgette, for putting this together. All right, anything else? All right, moving on to our celebration of excellence. Our first thing on celebration is school board appreciation. I think Bridgette.
Yes, we just want to take this time to thank each one of our board members. I would like to go ahead and personally announce each one of you. Felix Nunez, Trenton, Priscilla Robinson is not here this evening. Joel Westmoreland, which is our president. James Spardamai is our vice president. He also is not here this evening. Mr. Mark West and Laura Guth were the show. And all of these individuals spend a lot of their time and dedicate a lot of commitment to our district, our staff, our students. And so, we just want to say thank you. I know you can look around and see signs hanging and baskets that were provided by all of our campuses. So, thank you so much for all that you do. Sure, great. Next, we also have the student council live over here that they want to present for the general act.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Bring them back in one more time.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. That's very kind. Thank y'all for all the gifts and the baskets. Those are wonderful. Y'all are so sweet.
I can see you're getting on.
Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you to everyone for all the little goodies. It's so fun to be able to come in. We love what we do, obviously, or wouldn't be here. I know it's like huge paychecks to sit in this. But we truly do, I think I could speak for all of us. We wouldn't be sitting at this desk if we didn't care about Bay City ISD and the direction that it's going and being able to step into that role of former ones. And thank you for electing us and trusting us more than anything. Because I know a lot of our community, staff, and parents. So, thank y'all for that. All right, moving on to the next thing. We're gonna go a little bit out of order. Our Girl Scouts of America are going to come in. Good evening, how are you all? You doing good? Welcome.
Good evening, Bay City School Board. My name is Josam Munoz and I am the troop leader with Girl Scout troop 156083 and the community leader for Matagorda County with students from Cherry, Lynn Roberts, Tenny Holmes, as well as Bay City Junior High and even girls from Remblee ISD and including... Holy cross, I'm sorry. And last year, we were given the amazing opportunity to meet with you for the first time. And as a first-year troop, we had a total of 13 registered girls. Now, our troop consists of 31 girls and we are continuously growing. This past year, our troop has assisted the elderly and laid wreaths for fallen veterans at one of our local cemeteries. In my community position, I have had the honor of helping build seven troops this year. The Bay Palace community now supports over 120 Girl Scouts, totaling nine troops in Matagorda County, all thanks to all of our local districts that allow us to work within our communities. We still use those same values of character, self-esteem, and community. Girl Scouts helps buy girls, develop values to guide their actions, provide the foundation for sound decision-making, and contribute to the improvement of society through their abilities, leadership skills, and cooperation with others. Girl Scouts also helps girls develop a strong sense of self, positive values, and healthy relationships within their community. On behalf of all of the Girl Scouts in Bay City ISD and Matagorda County, I would like to thank you for making Bay City ISD a place where girls can challenge themselves, be confident in who they are, and make our community and the world a better place through Girl Scouts. I want to introduce you to one of my cadets, Zoraida Jammer, who is a student of Bay City Junior High. And she would like to tell you how the Girl Scout program has helped her.
The Girl Scouts help me develop leadership skills and qualities. I've worked with friends, a team working on the work that I've developed through various activities and projects. I've gained valuable life skills and lessons like coping and fighting true racism. Organization has also prepared me. I have so many memories that I'll always cherish. And lastly, I'm very thankful for the school working with me on this.
We also have some babies for you as well. Some girls that want to puppy. And again, thank you so much for all the opportunities that you've given us.
We're just here. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Girls, thank you so much. Thank you so much. That takes a lot of courage to have stand-up here in a special speech. So, thank y'all for coming. All right, our last celebration of excellence this evening is going to be by Mrs. Mota for our TAPI state qualifier.
So, we are excited that we have three of our students who were in our region competition that are advancing to the state competition here in February. I'm gonna call each of her names and ask you to come forward and hopefully you'll hold on to the last one. We might make it just in time. We're gonna share a little bit about each one of them when they come up. So, Leslie Cisneros. Leslie is actually a state qualifier in lesson planning and delivery for the arts. And she did a lesson at Cherry Elementary. Penelope Montanato. Penelope is also a state qualifier. But this year, she did her lesson plan in humanities and worked with Lynn Roberts students. Not only can our TAPI students compete in lesson planning, but they can also do a job shadowing opportunity. And Ian Ramos may jump in here at the last minute. But he did an exploring student services careers. We're gonna be job shadow of one of our special services team members. And he is also qualified for state. A tip about TAPI. So, this is our opportunity to grow our own in the very first steps. These ladies are teaching, same way teachers are teaching in the classroom. Not here this evening is our student who helped assist them with the production of their videos. So, we did have a student that worked from our deep studio department, did a lot of work with them to help follow them to their lesson, did recording and some editing. And Nick Kalaszek is a sponsor for that. So, we thank him for doing that. And then Amy King, she'll join the ladies. She has been our sponsor in the interim when we lost our sponsor first semester. And so, she worked with these girls in their homeroom every day to help them prepare for the contest that was coming up. And we thank her as well for helping us continue to tap.
It's about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Do I want to get this?
No.
Great job. Good luck here. All right. We do not have any comments. So, we'll keep moving right along in our agenda, which takes us straight to LSG. Good evening, how are you this evening?
I'm great and thrilled to be in Bay City tonight. I know it's very bright here. I always love my home. And I told you this every time. It's just so neat to see all the celebrations. And congratulations on the good days happening. I love your good things, part of your vision now. Finally, all right. First, raising your attention. We saw it in your folder that your last meeting, which was... It says no members, is that correct? Because I know you're a busy sketch line. Okay, it had total time of 104 minutes and your eldest team time of 62 minutes. So, that brought you to 162% time focus on good and outcomes. So, that is remarkable. Great job. Tonight, we're going to review the CCMR goal of 3.1, 3.2, 3.3.
I do, I have all of those things.
Do you want the PowerPoint?
Yeah, if you want to put it up. So, we'll just be following along tonight with the charts that you have in your board book. But 3.1 is a goal where we are tracking current sophomores as they are working already to earn their CCMR as college career military readiness. And as we started the school year last year, this group was like at point something percent. So, as freshmen, they don't come to us with a whole lot. But they are, they started at 3% from the end of last year. So, a few of them over the school year. And then now, we are at 6% for real. I say that because that's what counts, which is DSI. But if you count the ones who've already earned dual credit, which will not actually count to the end of the school year, we're 11%. So, some of our sophomores are in dual credit classes first semester. But it doesn't really show up in our data for us until the end of the school year. And it doesn't count for them on their transfer. Then, if you look at 3.2, those students started out last year as they ended the year last year at 14%. But they started out at about 3% as we began last year. They're current juniors. And so, by the end of last year as sophomores, they were at 14%. And then, in January, for sure, with our TSI, they have 16%. But 35% if we were to count them all semester of dual credit. We are already seeing the juniors where the seniors started last year. So, very excited about the work that we're doing to really increase our numbers in dual credit classes because that really has made a difference. And the students who are in those dual credit classes have oftentimes really inspired other students. You know, friends and peers are seeing their students, their friends get college credit. And then they want to do the same. So, that has been one of our targets. In addition to that, just to kind of share where we are for what the next step is for that group, we are working already on some of our students that are sophomores and some of them that are juniors in this semester. Also, sitting for the TSI. We wait till second semester because of the spoken sequence in Algebra II and in English III. So, we want to make sure that they've covered enough of the content to be fairly successful. So, we'll be starting to work with our students. We already have some that's scheduled for our honors 10th graders. You might have seen in the newsletter that that's coming up for them. And they'll be taking the TSI for the first attempt if they didn't attempt on their own because maybe they were trying for dual. But if they do pass, it will increase again the opportunity to have four dual. And then, our juniors will be taking some as well. We're pulling those students from our algebra geometry classes. Sometimes that math TSI is just a little bit harder if they haven't covered that content. And then, lastly, 3.2 is our current seniors. We are really excited to share these numbers with you today because our seniors started at 58%, whereas last year's seniors started at 36%. So, our seniors this year started much higher because of the work that we were doing to work on TSI and for dual credit. But then, already in January, we have 63% that have counted with their increased TSI. We like for them to pass their TSI as well as do their industry-based certifications and other things because that counts more towards our CCMR outcomes-based bonus. So, we kind of get a little return on the money that we've invested them to spend in our programs. But we are at 96% of our seniors meeting CCMR because the rest of them have done the A ready, which is our college kind of entrance preparation program kind of in comparison to what they would do for remedial English and math at the college level. Last year, we were really struggling with the senior group being invested in getting that done. But with some of the other symptoms that we already had and some of like the leverage we had with 90% attendance rule and some other things, we kind of also held this over their heads for participating in extracurricular activities. And we really also found that that was, you know, we speak their language when we're saying, you know, we want to make sure that you guys participate in all the senior activities that are going to be spring semester. So, we really want you to be eligible for your diploma. And that's one of those criteria that we're working with them on. So, already at 96%. But that doesn't mean that we are slacking off on the TSI efforts and our additional CCMR work that we're doing. You might have seen in the newsletter that we had some additional certifications that came in. Those are not included in any of this data because those things just happened new in this semester. And this was all based on the data that we had at the end of the first semester. Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
One, sorry. Last year, that sophomore, what was it, was freshman. He said it ended at 3% and that they came in at barely...
Barely 1%.
So, what are the opportunities that they have at junior high to earn CCMR, start that, be proactive?
So, really, the first opportunity is TSI testing. And we are arranging that already with our junior high. A lot of it happens through the Avid program because that is one of the things we have to do through Avid. But we also open our doors to any eighth grader starting this Saturday. So, if they signed up in advance, we have quite a few that are coming. So, we have a little extra additional staff because sometimes they get lost in their building. I don't know where to go. But this will be the first time that we invite eighth graders. So, we have five Saturdays, the eighth graders and any current high school students as well who will be offered that opportunity to come and go ahead and test so that they would be able to take college credit exams.
So, are there any other opportunities that could be? Is it only TSI is what qualifies?
It really is. No, so TSI as well as industry-based certifications. But we do not start our industry-based certifications with our CTE courses at that level. We make sure that they're in the right track where they want to be because now that the state requires them to have two courses in the same program of study, if they were to start there and change their minds, like let's say they say they want to take a construction class. But then they come to high school and they're like, no, I want to do health science. Then any certification they would have done to begin with, they would not count. So, we hold off on the certifications until they get to high school to make sure that they're going to count towards their graduation requirements.
Sure. So, they all know a real opportunity is the TSI?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question?
You have a question, it's not free.
I don't have a comment. I was talking to somebody at work today. He was talking about his junior at one of the mega schools in the Christian Rosenberg area. And he was bragging about another education, everything. And I was like, you don't like, you don't get more information about it? He's telling me, you know, that they're doing this, doing that. How many dual credit classes is he in? It's like, uh, I think they offer one, I think. Am I right? One, that's it? The more questions I ask, the more you away.
Well, thanks for sharing that. I will say that we are so blessed that this year, all of our dual credit classes really stalled enrollment because of the face-to-face instructors. Additional instructors earning their qualifications makes a huge difference when parents know that there is going to be a support, somebody that they can make contact with. Of course, we do still have a couple of entry-level courses. And then, our economics course is one senior-level course that is not taught by our instructors themselves. It did really help out our master schedule as well. So, when we are looking at the fact that Ms. Morrison is teaching the sophomores who are in a dual credit class but also going to test for STAR, we're able to target both sets of skills at the same time, but then also get those students prepared for being more successful in the other classes that are going to have writing components. So, when they're taking those other college courses, they had not previously been able to take 1301 or 1302 until their junior year. And now, they're taking it sophomore year if they're in the early college program. And those students being able to complete that full associate's degree really kind of counts on the success of each successive course. And so, we've seen a great deal of progress with really just being able to work that in. And then, again, the students feel more open to saying, I need help, coming to tutorials. And then, our teachers definitely have an open door. And when we work with our staff, we work with them on relational capacity. We work with them on just engaging strategies. Whereas if you were in a lecture class, it's online for sure, those kinds of things are not afforded to our students. So, we're really excited about having so many of our own staff members and keeping them because they are just really excited about the progress that they're seeing as well. And that's where some of that 11% net increases, those are sophomores that earn their 1301 credit with Ms. Morrison this past semester.
I'm gonna add to that. And that takes great deliberations. A lot of times, the universities only want their people to get in a lot of these courses. So, I have to say that.
Well, we can say that going through the grant process and working with the University of Houston-Victoria, who was willing to actually offer the courses when we needed them so our teachers could get different initials. But then, also, the CJC being very willing to hire on one extra staff member, we're increasing their enrollment and they can't sustain it with their adjunct personnel. But our own personnel, just freeing up part of our master schedule where that person has the same students they would have had anyway. But now, in dual class.
That's great. Yeah, awesome.
Let's see.
Any other questions? Thank y'all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to 5.1. Let's see. Are you doing that?
Oh. I am. I'm doing part of it. It's 5.1, me?
That's what, the notes that...
I was really kind of thinking the grade levels under me were first, but you're right. So, I'm back again. 5.1 is our English goal. And we've really been working a lot with our English 1 students when we added this goal last year. Made some different plans for what we were doing for instructional strategies, what we were doing again in the master schedule, how we were scheduling it. And of course, kind of what we were doing with our CPAs. So, you will see that our English 1 students' baseline is based on the spring of 24 current 10th graders. So, we are comparing apples to oranges here just for the baseline. For you to see that 10th graders last year ended the year at 57% meets. This year, when we took our first two CPAs in November, we were up to 63% with the current 9th graders. So, they were already above where the last year's 9th graders had ended. However, we did a full benchmark, first time that we have done that. We did a full benchmark on the December semester exam. Only counted the parts that would count for what had been covered for the grade itself. But to give our teachers a really good idea because of our teacher incentive allotment about how many students would or would not make growth. And so, when we gave that full benchmark, we were down a little bit to 48% at needs. But we were testing some material, particularly the material working with argumentation, which they are in the unit for now. And so, I would say that that is where the explanation is a little bit for the decline. However, I don't have the exact approaches numbers. And I meant to bring that post-it note after I had my conference with the English 1 PLC. But the approaches number was up. So, more of our students who had not met expectations that are now qualifying the teachers for the teacher incentive allotment for student growth are making the approaches mark. Even though you don't see that in your data because to you, we only report meets. But I shared that with Dr. Mack in a meeting. And something that we've been doing across our campus is sharing the did not meets number. Sometimes that can be disheartening if you look at did not meets. And you think, oh, man, 80% of special education students last year did not meet. They didn't even get to approaches, much less meets. So, if you look over at our special education numbers, we have 5% that are at meets. Whereas last year, in the real numbers, we had 80% that didn't even come close to approaches. And so, there is a great deal of growth in the little numbers, I would say, in our subpop numbers, just from where we're looking at what we were working with and the fact that we did a fully exam. So, if we were to take this full length and kind of compare it to where we are, then we're gonna do another one here in February. Now that they have taught the argumentation unit, we're gonna redo the benchmark, different year, full released exam. And we'll have additional comparison data for our teachers. So, that'll give them the push from the end of February into April to be able to look at targeted skills all reviewed. Any questions related to English 1?
So, looking, I pulled data from June of '24 for the eighth graders and for the ninth graders last year. So, that are now, so eighth grader would now be ninth grade. And it's a significant drop. Significant, like 66% overall in eighth grade. And now, we're at 48. So, what, where's the...
It's with the performance standard number. So, the requirement for meeting, the expectation is higher at ninth grade. I believe Rosie's number is 34 for the approaches, the raw score number. And at high school, that raises just for approaches into like 43. So, across, when we're having to do our growth tables, we have to enter what the eighth grade performance... So across, when we're having to do our um, growth tables, we have to enter what the eighth grade performance standard was. And we have to enter what the ninth grade performance standard is. And then there's an adjustment through the lead forward system, because they're, they're being asked to make a higher score this year. Then they were asked to make it eighth grade to make those same performance levels.
So what is the performance level with?
If you can even, I can Google it, but I can send it to you. Yeah, I'll put it in the newsletter for you.
Yeah, I, I understand that November was CBAs and January was a full test. But that is a significant drop than if we're approaching STAR date. And I know for my personal self, there's been some regression and some lacking in the English department, and this is, I'm thinking. What is going on? Like, what is, like, where are we moving? How are we getting these students? How are we ensuring these students are getting to where they need to be?
So we are using data on a bi-weekly basis in our PLCs, reviewing any of the skills that they are not meeting standard for to repeat those. And those are continuing to repeat until we see an increase in the mastery. And some of them are still being spiraled in right now, so I've done observations this week and last week in English classes almost exclusively. And all the things that we've talked about are repeating, like, so all the different um, test item types. So the item types where they're having to do comparisons, or they're having to write written responses with text support. Those are all being um, cycled back through, even though that's content that was covered at the beginning. And then again, like in this semester, um, we made an adjustment in the scope and sequence. Where poetry is coming back, because poetry was assessed, students performed very low in the poetry genre. So even though we're working with um, argumentation, we have brought back poetry for a comparison piece, just to come in and repeat those things again. But I will definitely share with you where the performance standards are and the difference between those. I will say, we've had this conversation in our teacher incentive allotment meetings, um, with algebra as well as with English. It is very deceiving to look at numbers from eighth grade to ninth grade when the performance standards move. So literally, your target was here, and they moved it here, and since you are now getting the same score. So a complete move of the target for the performance level to be the end result.
So for approaches, for eighth grade, it's um, thirty-four, and for ELC, uh, health program, sorry, English one, it's forty-two. For meets, eighth grade is fifty-two, um, English one is fifty-five. And then masters is seventy-three, grade of eighty-four for English one.
Thank you for that.
So where we're at, it's fifteen to fifty-five.
Yeah. And then some instances, that can be. Um, when you look at the raw score conversion table, the scale scores are adjusted based on the statistical data that's reported. So it could be one question, it could be three questions, depending on the questions that were given the weight. Some questions on the test count one point, some questions count two points. The written composition counts as five points times two, which is ten.
So you're gonna be giving this test again in February?
We are, but different, it's not the exact same release exam, but another full release.
Yeah, it covers the same.
Yes.
Content.
Yeah.
So I, I would like, and I don't know the rest of the board, but I would like to see that data, because this is shocking the alarm. Um, that we're at forty-eight percent in January. So I don't know if that's something that you can provide. If it's just me, that's fine, or if the rest of the board wants to see those, those numbers, um, to see how we're tracking. I know English one is a huge, huge chunk, and it's a big, uh, it was, it was hard last year. And it's been one of those things that I think we need to, to keep around, or I have a bunch of pressure to keep it around. So I don't know if any of the other board members would like to see that data as well, but I know I do.
I'll provide it for everyone. That way I don't miss anything, or what exactly gives the whole program that way it's there. But the last thing I shared, I don't know if anyone was able to put it in, is hyperlinks, were y'all able to hyperlink all that sheet? My response is I'm back from the first questions. I'm just making sure y'all have that, if you would test that out, because it says.
It asks your permission, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, so maybe a permissions thing, but it opens the link, okay, I can access that. That, that way it'd be in there, and anytime we wanna go back to it, it would be hyperlinked, and I'll make sure.
Yeah, it just says, request access.
All right, and you provide.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so um, whole power center five point two, it deals with eighth grade. So eighth grade, um, reading level, our students' score, the rate level, what on the CBAs will increase from forty-eight percent in August twenty-four, fifty-two percent by August twenty-one five. Um, we reported in November, and we didn't have a survey in December, so the only, only one additional assessment between the last time we recorded for eighth grade and now. Um, just a reminder that our baseline is, what you see on there was the seventh grade data, so this is apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Um, with the November, uh, data that we had, it's an average. So for November, it was an average of CBA units one and CBA unit two. On the bar graph on the bottom part, it individual approaches meets and masters for each one of those CBAs. But in addition that we have for January's information is we took the fall semester exam and the stats. And that exam was about twice as long as our CBA, we had twenty-five questions too, so our benchmark was at the end of February. Um, so that's being tested on information and instruction that they have. So in that, you can see that we have increased from November to seventy percent for all students that are meets or above. Our Hispanic student group went up to sixty-nine, white one at eighty-nine, economically disadvantaged increased sixty-six. Our Spanish group went from twenty-nine to thirty-two, African-American remains standing at seventy-one percent. And our um, emergent bilinguals went up to forty-eight percent. If you look at the individual assessments, you can see that approaches, the passing, uh, number went from ninety, it took a little bit for, you know, two CBA. But then went back up to ninety-two percent for the small fall semester exam. Our meets went from sixty-seven to seventy to eighty percent. So our average is um, seventy-two percent for all three assessments, but just reading for our fall semester exam, our meets above was at eighty percent. And our masters was forty-five for CBA one, CBA two went up to fifty-three, and did a little bit for the semester exam, but that's masters. So we're still keeping on what we've got going on with Saturday's school, our calendar time has helped out tremendously. Um, we're still using hot Excel, we're still using our district um, race strategy for writing. And so we're gonna keep, keep moving forward, and we're kinda, we just to see what if our benchmark, uh, data, that'll be included.
So your fall semester, or your fall, yeah, semester exam, or what you called it, that covered all the information from?
That covered, uh, CBA one plus also information from um, mine too, but we're reading the EHR, it fills on it, it's not just totally new information.
Okay, so the benchmark will then?
Benchmark is a release chart.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure. So they're making huge gains, even when you're going back and testing for a whole semester.
Yes, and now we do know that when we do take that benchmark, we totally transcribe these numbers, aren't going to dip. Just because the endurance piece and the, the writing, just the stamina taking that. But at least we'll have to have about a month before they ask you to take STAR, truly dig down deep into the areas that they really could focus on. But they're also working on that endurance piece right now as well.
On that, are they able to, like, on the TSI, or like, all this, like, the structure? I think the, the council would say that pause it, leave, come back, start over, as long as they're running a multiple-choice question session, and may pause.
Something happens with pause, it'd be if they have to, um, basically go to lunch, but generally, for the most part, we try to act to where they're complete before that. We do have students that do take longer, and so they will stop it, go to lunch, and then come back and resume where they go. That they take all these or all completely online?
Great job.
Thank you.
It's a great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Everyone, I have five point three, the overall percentage of fifth grade, our students' meets. Grade level or above on the curriculum-based assessment will increase from fifty-two percent in September or to one to forty-five percent by August of twenty-twenty-five. So, um, I have, I have our January data, um, if you look down the middle group of class. Um, under all, I have sixty percent, under Hispanic, I have sixty-two percent. Under white, sixty-nine percent, under beauty, fifty-one percent. As B, twenty-eight percent, African-American, forty-two percent, and B B, fifty-one percent. Our November data was also an average of CBA one and two. Um, so the January, uh, part of our presentation right now is our CBA, we double it in December.
Was there a CBA, there's no CBA?
CBA four is gonna start next week, I'm gonna call it.
Okay. Showing some good gains, and the majority of them, there were a couple that dipped back, but. And those are, are still, they're circling back, but you're sparking, spiraling in your CBA one and two, but typically.
Um, we also start, um, our benchmark next week, so reading starts next week, and, and C, and Matt will take your CBA. And so then the following week will do Matt benchmark, and you read will do CBA, so you can still get all four.
The, the, uh, specialization, it like, it jumps way up, and then it falls way down. That's where I know what's going on there.
My conclusion is that it is the genre that was tested, uh, during the third six weeks, which is drama and poetry for us. The test, we were posted four genres, so we approached a lot of abstract things on poetry, and then draw pictures to know how to read and. With the characters. But you know, going back to work, um, but that will spiral back in the fourth six weeks, so that we start five genres. So we're doing all the types of drama, sports with each other, and then of course, with the benchmark, we'll produce no charges.
So that, the poetry, the honor was tested.
And our CBA one and two.
Right.
All right. Superintendent, considering two, the superintendent shall not allow independent break all below ninety-two point two, twenty-three percent. And as you can see, there are several years worth of holes there, and for January, uh, the report is ninety-four point four. Which is.
Miss Ma'am, uh, we have a, a attendance incentive, uh, program this year as well, as some accountability. Uh, the data has been very strong in the outcomes, as we look at the strategy work, it's looking good, and I just have to commend the all staff. Our attendance group to our campuses, to the positive climate that are on the campus, is out of here, that makes students wanna be there. And, uh, appreciate, so, uh, really excited about the numbers, we know that we're heading into the toughest part of the, of the year. Uh, but, uh, yesterday, we sent out a progress report on attendance, progress report for the whole district. For the year, uh, the average of ninety percent, just to give you that. So last year, we looked at our activity list, activity lists for people who are involved in activities, part organizations, and, and, uh. The, the number of students making ninety percent was below seventy percent. For those kids, for the, the students in activity groups. This year, the entire student body is above that percent. Uh, some campuses, uh, have eighty-seven percent attendance overall for the year. Uh, but overall, averages of eighty, uh, percent overall for ninety percent, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so over eighty percent of our students right now have ninety percent attendance for the year, which means warm meals. They're with us, the desperate staff to take care of them, you know, and, uh, it, it's, it's just been great. And I think it will manifest itself, and, you know, manifest itself in academics, uh, everything.
Are you seeing any patterns with families? I mean, generally, when you're looking at your data that way.
So when we came back from our semester, uh, this, this is my goal, and so, uh, and I'm proud of the work that everyone else has done. Uh, we met in this room, pretty much everybody here, and it's semester, we went lying by law. And discussed family, not family, that's what it is. It's, uh, it's not a punitive approach, it's a supportive approach, it's fine, what we can do. Uh, and so it was a great discussion, looking forward to the next one, in the next six weeks, we'll kinda track that into the end of the year, because the second semester is so tough. You know, so when I go away, that semester, we'll do a six-week check-in, and tomorrow, I have data meetings with my principals. And so I've already shared it with them, they're aware, it's, of course, it's here, but, uh, the progress we have is not here, so that's news for the, uh, the, the student bodies of eight. And I'll get the exact number, I think it's substantial.
Well, usually, there's a difference, it's about removing barriers, but also engaging them and finding that way to be connected. So, sounds like that.
And, and there was, you know, we had identified, you know, the sub-pop duration there that is, uh, definitely needs our support. And that's part of the work.
Great, good job. Uh, four point one, superintendent shall not tolerate physically aggressive behaviors among students, which is very important, it's right there. Uh, I, you can see the yearly progress there, but I have a question about twenty-four, twenty-five, their numbers have shot up substantially, what is the difference?
I think the most important piece here is transparency. Uh, the news is, the data is not always gonna be what we want to see.
No.
It will be true. So that is the number, and so, uh, I, I, I read, and again, this is my goal, it's important. So I, I've read all the reports, I've read every single one. And so what's in this data that we will see, and I talked to the Brunsons about it before I presented today, was, there was some things that were horseplay that I think were above horseplay. And when I say that, we're not, we're not gonna, you know what I mean? If, if someone strikes someone, hits someone, we're gonna report it here. Uh, and no, it wasn't a mutual fight, it was coded correctly, it's coded absolutely correct. But the goal says physically aggressive, so shoving somebody, you know? That's physically aggressive, that can lead to an altercation, so, uh. I'm proud that we're honest, and that we're transparent, and I don't hope the principals have any complaints at all overall, but if you don't, that's fine. Uh, I shared that data with them, and, uh, I did see a, a reduction overall in mutual fighting. But I, I did see some shoving, horseplay where, you know, a, a slap item with a friend, that only leads to an altercation, and that's physical aggression. So for that, I owe that to you all, it's just, that's the definition that I'm using. And so I don't just go by the code, I read the comments about what happened. And, uh, again, the code was fine, was, I'm just saying, I wanna be transparent, we have some shoving and stuff, just that we're recording it here. So the mutual fight and all that, I mean, that is more traditional, if there is such a thing. But these, I, you know, I saw some, some slapboxing in there, stuff like that, it's all fun till someone gets mad. And, and, and again, it was a referral, it wasn't like it was ignored, because it wasn't, it was dealt with, and it was dealt with appropriately. Uh, so I just wanted to share that, uh, because that's what it is, that's, that's a large number, but it's a true number, we will continue to do that.
Well, as former principal, I appreciate that transparency, and I appreciate your willingness to have those conversations, it's, it's critical. And sometimes as a district, we get caught in the data reporting, and especially in the federal reporting. So sometimes we're holding back and not necessarily addressing everything in the way we, in our hearts, we want to, so. Thank you for that, that's, that's a hard place to be, but, uh, certainly sounds like you're doing right there.
We'll need you on this tomorrow, and so we'll have a conversation, Dr. Bronto and I were on a call earlier today. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about that in, in my report, but, uh, we're good.
That's great.
Thank you. Alright.
Last year was your first year.
It was the first full year.
Yeah, so I wonder. I write up something happens. And I did some support.
When you walk the campuses. I I call it, say, three or training. And part of that is transparency, but it is not right. And that's that's all well, but.
And I was surprised that.
It will be a follow-up and everyone sees.
Yeah.
It should be, uh, it must be consistent, uh, and fair to all students. And so I I look at all those codes and it's important, it's safe. Uh, they get a test, I set them, I'll hold the highlights on there, just more of, hey, everything's going great. And then I shared my observation, I shared, my observation was I saw some more horseplay. And so tomorrow we'll chat, we'll we'll we're gonna work. And I do like, I I I want our teachers to feel confident that every referral will be handled with this and it's all transparent.
Yeah, so that's what I envisioned when we first started, because I figured we'd go uh in first, a formal start, just because uh that might make the world.
And I really feel the success that we've seen. Is from the positive culture. The teachers and the campus, things like positive behavior. Edge of curriculum, because I think our kids, I think they feel loved and grown in the campus, I believe you. Uh, I think that's, I think the positive is more than anything more than, it doesn't, it's a referral, it's a referral, maybe you handle that consistently. But uh, we'll talk about some stuff in our presentation tonight, but I think uh the biggest results are. Because we're always happy, we're rather positive, that that's that uh, but. So absolutely.
You're right, Mr. West, though, we all know as parents, if the fall approved in there, they're gonna do it again, because uh you're not giving them any reason not to. So I appreciate that, you know, the thing the fall approved said, and I figured that was probably part of what the difference in the number is, but uh, that's great. Keep it up, that's remarkable, and you're right, the positive will outweigh everything in the end, and the kids hopefully get on board, the most that don't, they have. Alright, it's board evaluation time, if you don't have any other questions, or are we back about that? Get out your copy of that and. Lloyd's provided some notes here, so. Keep you all in here, you know, the script again. Alright, you got it all, ready with that? And I have what your numbers were uh from the last time you did uh your evaluation. Alright, starting with vision and goals, and I know you wanna get through this quickly, so I will tell you, last time you were at Meets Focus. And to move to Masters, you have to have committed the vision and stood out from those to memory and agreed that there's broad community ownership of the student outcome goals. Are you there yet, living there? Still at Meets? Still at Meets? And as I'm sure Mr. Brady tells you every time, the neat thing about doing this is you can see in writing how to move to that next next level, and it's kind of your next steps. Uh, vision involves two, the board has adopted growth progress measures aligned with each student outcome goal, which obviously we have, and uh that break reporting for the principals. Uh, last time you were at Masters, still that you're still there? It looks like you are from outside of here, outsider family. Alright, vision and goals three, the board has adopted constraints, obviously we have, we just went through those. You were at Masters last time, are you still there? Vision involves four, I hope you will get through this quickly, this could be very fun tonight in the last year. The board has adopted superintendent constraint progress measures, which we reported on tonight, last time you were at Masters, do those are still there?
Yes.
Progress and accountability. The board invests at least half of its time to improve its student outcomes, and overall, he shows here you have a fifty-three point one seven percent. So certainly that qualifies for Masters. Progress and accountability two, the board evaluates but does not interfere with progress for improving student outcomes. And he has made a note here that you were at Approaches last time, but the Meets, Kevin, he puts that you're working on the. Reported the average cost?
Yes.
Okay, and that you'll receive that at least annually, so you're moving in that direction. Okay, yeah. Uh, and one quarter ago, you performed the evaluation that you did in order to improve your quarterly progress tracker, so.
But she's working on it, can we?
I think it's a meeting, and you'll be presenting that later.
Uh, he told me by the February board meeting, I've worked on it with Doc and I haven't sat down to review it from last year to this year.
Alright, I think we can go ahead and move to Meets better, it sounds like you're ready to do that. Okay, uh, systems and processes, the board operates in a way that allows the superintendent to accomplish the vision. Last time you were at Meets. Masters requires an average of two hours per meeting and all the rest public meetings in the last quarter, well, did not exceed two hours. He shows here you had two point oh five hours.
Oh, man.
I'm I'm sorry, okay, that's beyond the limit. I mean.
That sounds like two on the dots mean, so you can't go over two?
Uh, the other two qualifiers there, board members receive the final materials to be voted on at least seven calendar days, he has a question mark there, you receive them all, your board packets ahead of time.
We receive, we have not received, there's been ones in the meeting that were less than seven. I'm trying to think that.
Well, and there's kind of a lot of bad weather, things happen that ask.
For sure.
Yeah.
Fine, so this one goes, I know we we didn't do the. No, wait, plus I missed that, we were waiting.
We didn't do that plan.
Yeah, so we needed the three posts, because we had.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I know you have some things out of control for that. And then the other part for Masters is no edits to the school board's regularly scheduled meeting agenda in the three days prior to or during the meeting, unless a state of emergency is declared.
Pretty good on that.
Yeah.
Unless you all approve, I don't make changes.
Right, I defer to you. Still at Meets, or you've moved to Masters with.
I would say.
Things out of your control.
It would, yes, yeah. Before Meets.
Meets, okay. Then we were waiting. Sounds like you're very close to Masters, though, and it's probably next evaluation will be it.
Yes.
Alright, the next one, the board promotes the vision, last time you were at Approaches, uh, you have your misplaced. The Meets, the other qualifier, he has a question mark, I has led or told that at least one training on local government's board of the community and the previous six month period. You didn't do that.
Was that, that was December or virtual term? The bound for the first, I think, early December.
Okay, and then Masters, students have been included in a new place one LSG training or two-way communication meeting. And newly selected board members have received an orientation on the LSG, he has both of us marked, so. Is that correct?
Is that where the students come into the two-way communication?
Well, I I think, I think.
That's what we discuss. Yeah.
But he just marked that if you do the one training, that you're at Masters this time.
Yeah, they 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 meet with me and I have met with them. Recently, it seems like that, but but yeah, I did, I took you.
Well, the previous quality period is in the last.
So is that, does that? Consider students having been included in one sort of training or two-way communication period?
I I I just transparently communicated with them.
Right.
And we just wanted analysis, we did those, we did the whole thing, but that's it, there was no community there.
Right, it's not requiring.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just students.
I appreciate that, so that one needs to move you from Approaches to Masters, is everybody comfortable with that? That's great, and then the last one, synergy and teamwork, the board works collaboratively and with the superintendents reach for the vision. So last time you were at Meets.
I don't know if that made.
You, he put seventy-six percent at board, so.
Above eighty percent.
Yeah, uh. And he had a question mark, I agree, so every member has completed all required trains, he says they're like.
We're missing team of eight.
Alright, well, and that we have the schedule.
Yes. Yes, because of last week.
So that.
So, but we're not at eighty percent.
So that would pump you back to the front part, yes. Okay. Is there? Anything that. Like for me to take back to him that. That's super embarrassing.
I'll have a piece in my presentation on state of the district, I have this which I'll be scheduling, so thanks for quarterly. And so in my presentation, I'll have some notes there with a question marks, and that's how we'll hopefully uh, it's just a starting point, but you've got, if you wanna let it know, we're gonna really try to hammer out quarterly. That way we're covering that with the L of the H. It's already scheduled.
Alright, uh, next month you'll be looking at G P M's four one, four two, and four three, and. Thank you, Lloyd Lee and I will be with you.
We appreciate you, is there a motion to be made? Alright, there's a motion on the table, is there a second to the motion? Alright, we have a first and a second, any further conversation? All in favor? Opposed, motion passes five to C. Alright, moving on to reports, Texas A and M K through twelve rural medicine outreach program.
Yes, this evening, uh, we are so excited, we have Carol Rue with Assistant Director of Rural School District Relations. Uh, here to talk to us about the Texas A and M K through twelve rural medicine outreach program, we're so excited to see you.
I'm so excited to be here.
And a great company.
And thank you so much for having me, I am honored to build a partnership with Bay City I S D and Rose of Texas A and M College of Medicine here with you tonight. And and I don't know if you know this, but there is a lack of healthcare providers in rural Texas. And and as the Langley University, we feel like it is our duty, it absolutely is our duty, and to serve rural Texas. And we have built a program and to hopefully have an impact, which definitely have an impact on the lack of healthcare providers in rural Texas. And our program is a three-part program and that it's been in existence for about four years. And and in the eighty-seventh, eighty-eighth legislature, we were funded with legislative funds, and that has really expanded our program. And and allowed them to hire you and and develop this K twelve outreach program. I'll tell you a little bit about the whole program and then go in specifically to the K twelve outreach. So the idea is that we are going to rotate our medical students through rural clinics and hospitals across Texas. And we are looking at those um doing that in Madhav County, working at Madhav Hospital and your local providers. So our med students are rotating uh through clinics and hospitals in Madhav County. And that allows them, medical students, the opportunity to know what it is to practice rural medicine and to get those experiences while they're in medicine. In addition, we're building uh rural residency programs and rural outreach for medical students and undergraduate education in those areas. When we do that, when we come into the community and we build those partnerships with the clinicians, we also build a partnership in the community and we have this engagement program. And that becomes agnes still and agnes, and and so oftentimes, key leaders and other agnes will support our medical students while we're in that community. Really becomes um. If you're, if you're on a development, so if you have a rural medical provider, they bring in coming to your community, right? We need that in order to support uh the school district and the other um activities that happen in the community. And so um bringing in that a community enrichment group allows our students to be immersed in the community, to know what it is that, do I wanna graduate and come back to Bay City and practice here? Is that something that I wanna do, what would that look like here, if this is community, a chance to sort of be the medical student? And the medical student has a chance to understand what it is to live and work in. In addition to that, the long game of this is the K twelve, because who's gonna come back to practice medicine um in Bay City is somebody that's sitting in this district right now. And so uh, for the first time, and I've been in education for a hot minute, and I've never seen a tier one university come into rural schools like we're doing in this program. We are literally going door to door, knocking on rural school district's doors and saying, what is it that we can help you do in relationship to promoting roots in healthcare? And so we are well-supported and funded through the legislature and other private vendors, and and we wanna offer these services to Bay City I S D. So what we're building really is around enrichment, the majority of what we build, I've been on staff for just about a year. And um it is enrichment program, so we wanna come in and offer above and beyond what your district is able to provide your students. Uh, through the needs that we have at Texas A and M University. And the biggest one starts with our our med camp, so we invite you uh to bring your students to med camp um in College Station. And this next year, it will be June the thirteenth and fourteenth, is, I tell everybody, it's free to every, it's free except for the superintendent. And so the the district provides the chef room and the bus, we provide the camp, the hotel and the meals. And and so we invite you guys to participate in that, it is a immersion experience, so they're on our campus and in our medical school, being taught by medical students and other healthcare professionals, the nursing students. This year we're gonna have a public health lesson, and we're also ha- hosting our first um regional med camp. And and we'll have that in Kingsville in February, so the school districts in that region will attend a day camp opportunity on the campus of Texas A and M Kingsville. In the partnership there, and the students will have immersion experience there, we'll do a vaccine lesson and an electric paralysis lesson on Texas and tick and one else, so super fun days. We also have a Zoom sessions and where we are zooming in med students into the classrooms, so. And an opportunity for med students to sort of get face to face um with your students. And when we have med students rotate in the clinics and hospitals, we offer those school district the opportunity to have those medical students in 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 their school, face to face. But a way to sort of supplement that, so we got the resume session, it's been really popular, and because the teachers can control it a little better. And so and we have med students do in and talk about their road to med school, really allows um the students to be able to see themselves in our med students and see what their path might look like. And some of the hurdles in our med students have overcome, it's not just a fairytale, and there's, they have roles and and they can, the high school students can see what it is to be there. So we're building a lot of different types of exploration and immersion activities, these are consistently changing and growing and then offering those pretty rural school districts. In addition, we're growing to offer a council support, and we are, at Texas A and M has just recently announced that cap our undergraduate admissions. And so what does that mean for your high school counselors, and what do they need to know in order to get kids into medical school? And kind of get that note up, because there are a lot of things that high school students can use to make, and so that they are competitive, and if they are looking for those postgraduate degrees. And so that's really us in a nutshell, and we are here to support your district specifically to what more district needs, it really is built around uh what more needs are. And just to offer those opportunities to your students. It really is built around what more needs are and just to offer those opportunities to your students.
Great. Um, one question in this maybe more for Dr. Mack, I'm not sure. Does this tie in? I know it's K through twelve. The Zoom calls, that's very, I love the opportunity for the med student, but also for our students. Will these be kind of meshing together with our medical pathway, those students? Or how will that?
Yes, and I want to credit Moser Flores also for for ushering this in. I know the two of you have done a whole lot of talking, but that was a natural, a a natural joint together of something we were already doing and taking it to the next level.
Yeah, and our health science teachers have been really excited about those opportunities that are always get to take their kids off campus. And you know, when they do, then there's not always necessarily the opportunities to interact at that level. So I know Allison Porter has worked, um, you know, just really intentionally to try to think about how those can be scheduled at the times that are most appropriate in their scope and sequence.
And like I said, it's changing that in the, in February, we're going to start a public health. So we'll have the public health students zooming in and we have medical research. I didn't even know there was such a thing. You need to get a degree in medical research. And so, I know, and so if I didn't know about it, surely your high school kids didn't know about it. So that's interesting. And we'll have those kids zooming in also, those students zooming in also. And so it's just a variety of different things that are available. And and we do often fall into the health science CTE. That's what my background is in and what I know. And but also those high-level mountain science courses. And and so really we leave that up to the district to decide who interacts with us. We're open to who matters in burkies.
Thank you so much. Yeah, sounds like a great partnership. A lot of opportunities for our students. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you for knocking on our door. And please know we're always ready to answer. So whoever else is in line, I'll go and let them know, come on over.
Okay, yeah.
Bay City ISD is where education meets solitude. And this is just one more example of that. So.
It really is amazing. And I'm just honored to be a part of it and to know this program from nothing to something. And it's amazing for me. It's a fun opportunity for me. I'm a teacher and a nurse. And so it fills my heart and to be able to have this whole district and say, what can Texas A&amp;M do for you? And that's exactly what we're doing. And so any way that your students can be involved or participate or gain something in front of them, we have to offer. But show that with me. We'll build a program around that.
So thank you so much for your time and thank you for changing on a short notice to another week. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, um, moving on to our next report, the superintendent's report, which will be our state of the district. Hello, Dr. Mack.
Yes, I should say hello. Evening, everybody. Really excited to share the state of the district and where we are. Like we talked about coming in that first year in office, just really feeling great about where we are and what we're doing as a teamwork going into it. As we, as we go through this, please raise your hand or stop me at any point. I will. Uh, maybe in times, uh, some of you I mentioned, you've got some good stuff in here. If you want to say a word about it, that's awesome. It's great stuff. It's your work. It's amazing. I'm so, so proud of you. Uh, let's jump into instructional management and, uh. Board members, please, you'll get a, you're going to get a copy of this after this meeting with some additional hyperlinks. Uh, when you do a state of the district, I mean, it could be hours. And so just, you'll have that for your reference, but they'll be hyperlink, et cetera. For the most part, when you see the green string, the growth, where, uh, you will be seeing things in blue that are a little more recent or changed. Uh, and then it wasn't in your black font. We do not want to reinvent the wheel with this. We will burn these folks out. We're doing something new every year. So, uh, some of the things are going well, uh, as far as tried and true working well and the other piece of it. Uh, and I'll just start on that first string, you know, in one of our LSG meetings, we were talking about vertical planning. Uh, that's, that is ongoing. And I know Mr. Townsend's had that up and I got the report back for me. But it was, uh, he said it was a success on that. Did he think you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, it was a huge success. Um, and you know, the campus principals were the catalyst for that. And we did our first session with the teachers, uh, when we got back at January. And they were super receptive. It was very eye-opening for them. What we did was, it's the principals that selected to, um. Kind of crosswalk across campuses so that, uh, you know, our kinder had a chance to to collaborate with our first and our second grade. Had a chance to collaborate with our third grade. Uh, they got to see what star looked like, what what was, what they needed to do to prepare for them and get some things, common languages. Um, the biggest piece is walking down that strategy that's being used as a secondary for our races. Of course, you can't use that whole strategy at some of the lower levels, uh, but they're piecing that out, uh, so that we have consistency across the district. Uh, so our kiddos are able to become proficient at that by the time that they get to that point. Um, but it was a really, really good session, uh, I felt. Principals, if you want to chime in, I I just, it was one of the best things that I felt that we've done in the district so far. Just allowing them an opportunity to collaborate. It really made a difference in instruction going on in the classroom.
On the growth one, and, uh, the red font, uh, Mr. Townsend, I met all this earlier today. And so, uh, basically, you you may have heard about HQIM in the past, and that's really coming from COVID days. Uh, when we went through COVID, the state stood up some materials, uh, and, uh, transitioned to this highly, uh, high-quality instructional materials. And now it's taking in a one more transition to, we currently have one vendor, Blue Bond. And so. Those are the resource materials that it appears the state is going to. And I say it appears the state is going to those. Uh, there are some funding implications that you may recall that we've mentioned that you go with it. Or Chris, anything on the funding piece that you want to mention?
Yeah, so if you, if you do the HQIM, um, that's fully vetted through the Ember process, then you get the additional funding purchase. If not, uh, you could still purchase, you know, some of the other instructional materials, but you do not get the benefit of having the same funding piece as you did with the other. Uh, and right now, uh, it's, and we talked about this one at the beginning of the year because I mentioned to you that we applied for a couple of grants. Uh, and, uh, but right now, it's, it's the best time to do it because we are able to apply for grants that pay with support to help our teachers. And so there's a, either go to it or you're going to have to pay for it.
So, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, and again, I'm sorry if I missed one of your points. And and what's really important here about HQIM, and I know Region Three is at the forefront of these materials, is I really feel the rollout. Of starting with the ER, ELA before the math, taking our time with it, making sure that the teachers are well-supported. Because I have seen some full implementation attempts that really burned out a lot of people. It was very stressful.
Yeah, and so it's been real purposeful. And and we talked about this at the beginning of the year. I know you guys get a lot of information that comes across. But just as a brief reminder, um, you know, we started last year with applying for a grant that allowed us some funding to get our people together to build a literacy framework for the district. Which meant they got together to talk about what they felt good literacy instruction looks like for our district. Um, and so then the natural stepping stone to that was to do an evaluation of the current resources that you have. Do those resources get you to where you need to be according to that framework and research-based instructional strategies? And so we did literacy first because that has been one of our major focuses in the district. Um, and so now naturally we move into the the RLA HQIM for literacy to meet those needs identified in the framework. And that will be only for K through five. Um, and so this year I've applied for a grant for us to do the same thing for numerous math. And so we'll go through that same process and then we would apply for the HQIM for math, K through five, and the next. Instead of doing everything all at once, and it also allowed us an opportunity to use some of those grant funds to offset costs. To get teachers to be able to do some site visits of districts that were actually implementing HQIM so they can see what it looked like. What does that process look like with the POCs? Um, and and ask some questions for us to be able to try to methodically go about this. Instead of, I've never been a proponent of throwing something at somebody and saying, this is what you're going to do. Um, the state's kind of doing that to us, but we're going to try to minimize that impact for our teacher as much as possible.
Uh, and then on the next bullet, as far as we're planning, uh, we've just gone through our LSG. And I have it parentheses there. I thought was a key point appropriate for this, uh, is incorporating, uh, the spiral link in the CPAs and the average scores in the CPAs. To see how the overall curriculum is going. Uh, instructional management continued. Uh, that will be a hyperlink on the screen for that, for that first EH local is obviously that you all, uh, adopted. That is our overall curriculum management plan. Uh, we still have our curriculum of math going, but obviously with, uh, Blue Bond coming on. Uh, curriculum never ends and I always, I I feel bad for our 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 campus administration and our and our teachers because there's always something new to come. And it takes a lot of effort to to stand this up. So we know that, uh, we know that HQIM, uh, Blue Bond is coming. And again, back to that, that piece of the way of space, and I think it's really going to help us. Growth, uh, continued campus walkthrough, uh, non-negotiables. And what I'm going to do in your, uh, in your newsletters, I'll show you what that report looks like on what the non-negotiables are. Uh, and that is presented in a real nice table for me as far as every walkthrough. Those of you that have gone to the campus highlights. Uh, probably when you're in a classroom, you know, the objectives are written the same. The data walls are very similar. Uh, so everything's coming together. It's very. Uh, so as far as those, it's, uh, continued campus walkthrough, non-negotiables review is just to see, do we want the same non-negotiables from year to year? Is there something new we want to look at?
Dr. Mack.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we, with the, when you started the EH local, the curriculum mapping, you started at specific grades. Where are we in that process? I know it's, I think, if I recall, which is, I think it was Tenny Holmes that we started for the mapping.
Yes.
And then it was being pushed out of direction. Where are we in that curriculum mapping process?
So all of the campuses have all curriculum maps built out. The high school has a couple that are still pending, but it's a lot at the high school.
Okay.
It's not just four subject areas. It's already good classes within them. Um, but what they're doing also is they're building them as they go throughout the year. Um, so that, you know, instead of just going through the year, they're, they're building it as at the high school as they're doing. So by the time we get to the end of this year, everything will be done. Um, but there's only, I think it's only two classes at the high school, um, that that are not completed yet.
And have you had feedback from teachers on how it's going? If they're, or do they go in and use it or are they going in and changing? I know that when you initially toss, put the idea out there and put it into motion, that was part of it, was that they could go in and add things and see where the differentiation could be. There are people using that. Is it, is it becoming?
Yes, and I'll let the principals talk to that a little bit more, but I I will caution you on the, on the adding things to it. Nothing gets added to those without going through me. That's part of that EH local. Um, and so I use my team and the principals to vet anything that's added. Now, there are specific areas that you could have in there where you could put a folder and the teachers can put all the resources that they're using.
That's what I'm really trying to.
But any of the other tweaks, they.
They can't.
Yeah. It now, they can suggest that we're going to talk about it and make sure. And it all has to be tied to the rural district resource list that we have. Principals, do you guys want to talk any about how the, uh, the curriculum maps have played out on your campus?
I would just say that for our campus at the high school, it really made a big difference with teachers who have multiple preps. And having to switch up, like this year, you might have to carry one section of biology, but you've never carried it before. And maybe not having common planning time, but it's been real critical in making sure that the teachers are following the same scope and sequence. But that the teachers maybe who have lesser experience or are taking advantage of the veteran teachers who have taken the time to create those and utilize the additional resources. Um, we had a staffing change at semester and I was able to transition a person from a complete different department as an elective into a core subject. And they were ready to roll, although they taught that core subject in the past for like twenty years, wasn't what they were doing. And they had not had to any time at all to do any preparation. So one day's notice and can walk in and have everything in front of you that you need to do to move forward. Um, it has really helped, um, especially also with the fact that they are, I would say, being rewarded for the work that they're putting in. Because we've talked so much about use the resource. Um, really be intentional about these instructional strategies that you've learned here that we want to incorporate. And that they're, because they are taking the time to put it in, it's, there's the reward in that not only are we utilizing that across the board, but then we're seeing the results in the end because there's such consistency for the alignment of the programs.
And and I do want to commend our staff because it was another lift with updating teacs this year. And they've been going through that process. So it's a never-ending process. So it's, it's been a heavy lift for them. Um, so I mean, they've, they've been great.
Um, on the next one ensures appropriate data reviews and developing recommendations and decisions. Again, through LSG, we know that we've been going through those assessments and screenings and, uh, the various types of data gathering. That's all in black font because that is the carryover. Growth, continue to develop a new program. And so I haven't put this in the newsletter yet. But, uh, uh, when it comes to being innovative, creative and taking us to the next level. Uh, the conversation started and innovation has to be outside the box. So started a conversation, facilities, uh, they were looking to hire HVAC person. In my former district, we did master electrician. And they were with our, uh, facilities director, he was able to give them hours. So we started that conversation about, we took the same approach, but did it with HVAC. They showed so many, I I have a friend in San Antonio, our kids grew up together. He told me he turns down more work than he takes and doesn't advertise at all. And so in Texas, HVAC is a thing, right? And so, uh, we reached out to one of our vendors, one of our folks that were already paying. And, uh, we were met with warmth. They said, we can't find people. And we've been trying to do it. I bet they've tried it in two schools. They don't. And said, what are you guys going to give them? How are you guys going to make this successful? And a part of it is when there's a new course, the reigning courses are developed. It's not adult preferences. I think this course. And so the high school, uh, another blessing was that, uh, one of our CTE teachers is, uh, it's his area of expertise. So he's going to be kind of leading. And then it's not just going to be your average CTE course. And I need to expand on this. And I know, uh, Mary Lynn, you can, I know you know all this like the back of your hand. The fact that we already have the construction pathway. If you're going to get weighted funding for CTE, it has to be structure. So I wouldn't have dared call Mary Lynn without Saint Mary Lynn. Chris and I met first and it was like, uh, this looks like it fits in our pathway. So, uh, from there, we looked at, uh. What is the partnership looking like? And so our, our friends at Hunter, uh, said, we've got the curriculum. We know what we want them to be taught. And we'd like to start a pipeline to hook for us. And they said, let's work some hours out. Let's try to design this towards a zero-sum game for the district. So, uh, there's a lot coming with this, probably a full presentation. I'd like to invite and maybe to a future board meeting and maybe Chris, we could kind of roll it all out. Because, uh, again, heavy lifting, innovation, progress, uh, tremendous program. Uh, I saw an email where we're already talking about they're providing very expensive equipment. They're bringing it. They're unloading it. Uh, Principal Moser Flores worked on space for them. The teacher is lit up, excited. I saw an email from him today. Uh, you know, just how I can do this, just tell me what you want. He's very excited. Uh, and I think he was talking about after-school training. I think is what he's talking about today. He's, I'll stay as long as it takes. I want to do this. And so it's a tremendous program, uh. Where education meets opportunity. We already have the hundreds of certifications that are harvested every year. Uh, so that's going to be exciting and we'll bring that back to you. But again, I just thought the big piece of that was when you can bring a program like that and add weighted funding, so it's weighted funding, adds weighted funding. You've got a business partner. You've got a business partner. With that business partner, they're gonna pay for some of the things. We're gonna pay for the other things. It's gonna balance out. They were committed to zero sum. They're like, we need to make this place neutral where you can wanna do this. And we chose some selling points that had to be made as well. Like, how are you gonna make it work? We rolled out our current pathways. We rolled out our survey techniques and said, listen, we're gonna have a crew. It's very popular. It was very solid actor and I think, I think it's gonna be good. Any questions on that? There's a lot more coming, but again, it's, it's not a deviation. It's within a pathway already. Going to the next one here. Oversees the system of regular evaluation instructional programs that meet student instructional needs. And what's been ongoing and our EIC committee, which Mr. Townsend heads up. We're still in instructional management, Mr. Townsend, so we will be coming back here a little bit if we add anything. But as EIC, we comprehensive needs assessment are done annually. We develop our campus improvement plans. We present the district improvement plan. So that's the really heavy needs assessment program evaluation is there. However, under growth, I have refined intervention, refined intervention and performance data evaluation. You've heard a lot about IXL and principal may already have this. I think in the future, just looking at those IXL lists, who's participating, attendance rate, how's it going? We're hearing a lot of good things about the programs. And through the refinement, we're just, now that we're in our system, we're just trying to drill down and make it more at a microscopic level. It's refinement, rubbing the edges on. Okay, I'm at the end of this slide. Next, student services, ma'am. And the first one there that we see, just make sure I'll get my notes here. Student services including but not limited to health and safety. As you know, it's in blue text. This is our first full year of having a county-wide panic button system implemented, which brings us into full compliance with the school safety standards. We also have implemented a new incentive on school safety platform. So I do look forward to, that is something I look forward to showing you all, what all that is, because it's a lot. As Chief Cunningham knows very well, it is, it is, it is as big as any platform I've ever seen. I mean, our school calendar goes in there, guys. I know all of you are not working. It's mainly it's Chief and his team did the drills, put in there and all that. But that is a one-stop hub. If we get our cancellation, or the new thing is to get in there and you cancel for the closure for weather. You do it right there on Sentinel. And so get that, updated that. And I really look forward to, I wish they would share that data with us in real time so we could see who's doing what. And I bet they will. This was the first go-round. But we stood that up. Sentinel's going well. And I love it. Everything's in one place. Technically like our website. But it's focus planning on new district vulnerability assessment. There are now three safety audits. So the newest one, and we're gonna have that one in February of the week, is the district vulnerability assessment. And we went to a training on that. It is not your full-blown, I don't wanna say every three years, chief, that we have to do the full-blown audit. And of course, we have done, our campus access audits are ongoing. And so we had some of those this year. We'll put those in a report for you. But things have been really, chief, on the, on my desktop, on that app, really looking good on the true audits. And so we ended last year perfect and I think we're headed there again this year. So that's great work. And the whole state moved for us because remember, we were the ones saying, we are gonna hold ourselves accountable. Doors must be locked. And, you know, we were getting that. But we said, no, we'll do best practices. We'll be transparent. If we don't do it, we're gonna hold ourselves out. So the whole state moved away from that this year. It's no longer the star player, as it were. So I'm glad to see that because in all fairness, they should encourage people to go above and beyond. Discipline management program. We talked a little bit about that today. The behavior at the elementary units at the elementary. And the secondary are up and running, implementation of the special education behavior framework, positive behavior incentives. And I can talk a little bit about that. But Dr. Prontoni, do you wanna say about this section?
No, other than our campuses are doing a great job with implementing the program, identifying students that need to be in that program and using the ICP process to facilitate their placement in that program. And so, you know, this is our first year rolling it out. So as it rolls out, we're learning and adjusting and talking quite a bit amongst ourselves how to make it better as the year goes on. So I couldn't be more pleased with so far its implementation.
Dr. Pronti was very complimentary at the campuses today when we were with the state. And I couldn't agree more. It's kind of what I said earlier, just the campus culture and the positive piece of things has been really strong. The part I was gonna add a little bit to the positive behavior incentives. PBIS is spreading across the district and it's pretty much spread everywhere now, I believe. But nonetheless, we have sent it over to transportation now. We've received a lot of reports on transportation. Are there any campuses not doing transportation yet or is everyone? I know that was a phase in, but.
Ours is still phasing in because we're waiting on tokens. We have something different, our little ones.
I would imagine so, for sure.
Thanks to Gere, he started last weekend with the weather. And I think Ben has still been in tokens, maybe.
I think the tokens are here. It should be either today or tomorrow or by the end of the week, it should be getting rolling for charity.
So Ben and I'll get together and then we're gonna do the training with the kids. And we already have a similar system implemented on the bus with our students who have trouble. And so they're just gonna take it best way now.
And I had one principal share with me also, I guess it was a meeting around the school, someone said, because we all started riding buses. You know what I mean? Like, let's roll this out and have some teachers say, all right, you know, we'll date everything else. But, but again, a lot of positivity, transportation. I know Mr. Townsend, you met with him as well, transportation had a lot of positive things to say. It's your group. Anything you wanna add on how we're doing with the PBIS rolling?
Seems like it's gonna be a good thing. Obviously, it's gonna take some time, but they've really started to work on building those relationships with the kids as they interact with them on a daily basis, getting on or get off the bus. So I've seen some positive referrals coming through already. And there's been a change that I can see in behavior and it's starting to be in the positive direction.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. We're gonna ask, any questions about PBIS or transportation? That's a new one I'm really excited about. I think that's gonna help a whole lot. We gotta get our kids to school. We said that. And if they can't ride the bus, they can't be at school sometimes. So we want them on the bus, we want them to school. Yes. And so ongoing data evaluation, again, really, we're doing that already. I talked to you a little bit about how I read your referrals, how I share your referrals. It's all expression. It's real fast. The last one on this page, monitor student activity lists. And so right now, and I'll say this again later, right now, I'm going through mid-year meetings with the principals. And mid-year, we revisit their beginning of year goals. Their goals are their goals. I'm excited for them to be their goals. And they're all measurable. They're all connected. But we're having our mid-year meeting right now. We've had some great discussions about how to do the ongoing monitoring. But as far as monitoring of student activity lists, if you wanna improve attendance, if you wanna improve grades, if you wanna improve everything about your school culture, extracurricular activities are huge, everything. We've got a tremendous fine arts program, athletic program. We have to say, career and technical education, we'll talk about that in just a second, is an extracurricular activity. We just, what we honor taffy got. And so by the way, I got a call from a business person wants to make a deal with Taffy. So we'll see how that goes. I know you're like, no, no, you don't like it, you don't like it. They called me today and said, I got an idea. So we may start another pipeline. So that was today. I promise tomorrow I'll share it more. But it's exciting that it's catching the moment. So the purpose there, I can tell you historically, you know, I like to see activity lists where eighty percent of the students in the district engage, debate, all of the I I things. We have so much to offer student leadership. And what we have to do and what I've been working with the principals is, why aren't we doing activity lists? So we can export those lists and see which children are plugged in. I refer to it as the school being engaged with the child instead of vice versa. And we go to see a lesson, it's like, okay, is there engagement? But the extracurriculars, well, we reach out to them and say, well, you did a survey that I think this HVAC is gonna be incredible. And so, yes, and so on the last one, that's what I really wanted to hit on, come on. I'm so glad Elizabeth this year as well. When it comes to CTSOs and career and technical student organizations. I know you and I talked a little bit last year about we've got the taffy and maybe adding another CTSO. I think it would be good. I know we had some preliminary talks, but really wanna get into the construction and the welding. So what that is, that's their extracurricular activity. They compete. They go and state nationals all the way. And when you say, oh, we're starting a new, we're starting a new extracurricular activity, yes, but remember, this is weighted funding. So the weight is there for those things so that you use them for those things. And we had talked about, I think so Perkins money and we'll talk about allotments here in just a little bit. We talked about finance. But I just wanna put that bug in here. I know we talked about it last year with all this planning. Our year, our next year's already started. Next year, it's already started. We want to get our calendar approved so we can get going. We want to, our professional development plan, that'll be another slide, that thing will be done before we leave. So I'm gonna go to stat development. Any questions? On stat development, professional growth. In that first item, I'm trying not to read everything to you guys, but this, the thing tonight, I think is, is heavy lifting, isn't it, T? HQIM, TIA, is there another half? There's more out of it. So thank you, thank you for your efforts on this. TIA, because the teacher incentive allotment. That piece with the teacher incentive allotment is going to take care of some, take care of some incentives. It's gonna take care of potentially bringing scores up. And everyone is motivated. We're going to expand TIA. I'll let Chris here in just a second tell you guys where we are right now. And, you know, as soon as next year, I believe we could be doing some celebrating and I'll have some data for the presentation. And again, the last thing I wanna mention on the first one was beginning, middle and end of year discussions with principals. I really, really, really enjoy that. And thank you for that and rescheduling. We had our closed day. Some people had to reschedule somebody. Some didn't have. And of course, vice principal support and to you guys, especially my principals, oh my goodness. There's never enough time, is there? Our biggest constraint is happening. We need to have a vice principal support group academy. We need that. And we do have our training, but it would be neat for us to just be brainstorming the time because you need them on your campus. And so please be thinking about that. And I think we can, we can continue to refine. We can continue to develop our future leaders. This year, it is about as big as they come. I thought it was amazing. Our inaugural first-time professional development conference that we put on, a lot of good feedback from that. Tremendous, tremendous heavy lifting. Yes. Good job on that. Thank you all for your efforts. I know, Chris, I saw you going back and forth on that thing and it was crazy. And we had our, our campus presenters were awesome. Some of our most popular presentations were by teachers from campuses. So we're excited for that. Moving on into the growth area, develop proficiency in AI software programs. So AI can be a scary thing, but I'm telling you, I, I use AI. AI is important. If we don't learn it, if we don't learn AI and we don't prepare our kids, our kids are gonna be shortchanged. I met with a senior today in my office and, you know, he was talking about marketing. And I'm like, for any AI? Because we went to a train and the trainer's son, I think, had made a video, I don't know the genre of music. But he cleaned house on that video and he said, it wasn't a lot of work, was it? He's like, it's one much too much, but if you can do it, they have to pay. And so don't be surprised if you see an AI CTE pathway coming up. There's already a national superintendent's AI cohort to study AI and go through it. So it's coming and it's like a calculator or a computer. You either learn to master it or you learn to hide. And it is scary and we need to be careful. How do you look at the data? Data is really. The data, when we got into the recent, data concerns with the district, you're all over that. You're on top of that. And it's no different with AI. You're like, yes, but let's make sure every box is checked, every T is crossed before we end up with unintended consequences. Big thank you for that. State's aggressive developments. We are well-plugged into organizations. You may remember from last year, several of the team went through the task boat budget cohort on budgeting. I thought that was an intensive program. It was. It was a lot of data for our learning. I'm glad you guys joined in that endeavor. And as far as the growth, we're joining the Equity Center. So Equity Center, I just wanna say, they do a really good job with school finance. When, and it's not a big membership. So when I say about us developing our proficiency, last year, when the legislative session closed, there was some discussion communicating that it was a very successful, robust and very generous session. The only group that came out and it was very factual in Senate, mental on that was the Equity Center. A lot of people were getting real quiet all of a sudden. They're like, well, you don't have anything to say. But I commend them. Their work is really good. And again, that's not, that's not a must-have. But I appreciate that they, the way they stand up is what I can say. And I'm sure a lot of organizations stand up very well. They were particular. Anything on this one, on professional growth and development? Administrative management ensures the planning of activities within the district and they're coordinated, assisted with board policy. So yes, we do our LSG, we do our talks, we do our campus. Now that we do our campus more letters, but athletics doesn't now, right? Teams doesn't now. We have a system of communication. When you go back to the smore, it's like a website. You don't have to send five hundred emails and you don't have to go back and say, where did I file that? How long ago? Tremendous campus culture, tremendous communication with families, tremendous. Oh my goodness, robust content. I love the design that you guys are putting in there with your artwork and stuff. I'm nowhere near there. I won't let you see mine. But your group letters are superb. Organizing central office, district organizational chain of command is updated. District site, I'm sorry, district site visits, we're gonna be focusing next month on HR and business. So I will be taking HR and business with me on a site visit. And we're going to visit with another district, learn, develop and bring some good strategies back home. Anything on this slide? Physical facilities and operations management oversees the budget. We know that we are wrestling with the S R bear and the M and O loan bear and the three thirteen bear, but we are wrestling. And the strength is the innovative, I think, solutions. I think we're working hard to bring everything we can do. Cutting costs, really trying to really get this thing under control. After tonight, hopefully after tonight's incentive agenda, we're gonna launch things tomorrow morning. I've got all my notes. I did share a website with some of the folks on pre-date partnerships that we talked about. So I've already built that site, but we're gonna get, we're gonna get started as soon as we can. Then the other thing I would like for us to get together on is establish some clear priorities on the remaining IMS and maintenance tax note funds. When I say that, remember, we do have the facilities assessment. It does have a dashboard. This is where we show up. I need to make sure you have a login to that. But there are some, Mr. Boujack and I have been talking, there are some priorities that I think if we don't address them, they could really be a problem. And I think, I think it'll be very evident, but nonetheless, we'll have those discussions. We'll earmark all that. And again, it's more about a really solid infrastructure more than anything else. So that our kids are safe and warm at all times and things are looking good, but we wanna, we wanna stay ahead of them. Oversees budget implementation, I'm very excited about it. We can really do some screenshots on this. The new Skyward account monitoring screen. And so principals, you're probably better than I was, but when I first inherited that. The new Skyward account monitoring screen. And so, uh, principals, you probably better than I was, but when I first inherited that budget and all those codes, it was all over the place. So in Skyward, what the principals have is they have a standard view that comes up. It has all the accounts at real time. And then in Skyward, the way Skyward works, if you can dream it and you touch the key, you can make it. And so one of the things that we added was, I added for me, I hope y'all benefited from it, is all those code descriptions. Every single one and all across all those digits. Uh, Mr. Gomez might know how exactly many digits that is, but it's overwhelming. But, but nonetheless, uh, we, we're able to share those views. So in a meeting, I said, maybe it was like this, I, I can't survive without it. And so real time data, looking at budget with code descriptors that are customized. And again, I'll, I'll post some screenshots into that because I really would have liked that. I wish I would have had that when I was first open that. Ensures district investment strategies, personal management activities, uh, purchasing practices for sound. Uh, as you know, we did implement the, uh, the published student activity and fundraising handles. Uh, why was that first? And that is the scariest. Uh, most dangerous accounts that you can work with five hole, it's not even close. It's your eight, six, five student activity accounts. And so, uh, we have, thanks, thank you, the train, the, the questions, people contacting you, making sure we're following. And again, we always, I mean, anytime there's something new, change is hard, but what's worse is the pain that comes if we're if we're not in compliance completely. And so, uh, that's gonna be huge for us. I'm glad we have, I'm glad we have that posted already for a team. And then we're gonna explore new features in ODS and Skyward, uh, for financial data. Uh, here's a writing point. Uh, everyone can tell you, and I may have told you that the state went to a new data management program. And that deadline has been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back again today. Uh, however, I believe our date is just about eight minutes. I mean, we, I think we're fail free. And so that is a huge accomplishment. And so all those letters of just pushing back the data. What, what happened there is the state had a platform, but they didn't talk to all the vendors, six or eight of them on implementation data. And so we, we are very close with ODS on data suite. And if you're familiar at all with data suite, all of those systems pour into there. And so they were great. And again, huge out of region three, shout out, uh, CEOs from region three. And I, he probably hates to see me come in, I run him down and tell him what new features I want. Uh, and I really do. I think he runs the other way around. But a tremendous, and he was a big helper. Uh, I saw him at the leadership when we were at the leadership conference this year. Uh, I did get to chat with him a little bit and he, he stepped all that out for me. He goes, this is gonna be okay. It ain't gonna be fixed tomorrow. And so really excited about the progress made and I really feel that, uh, region three and, uh, ODS supporters offer chart. Their customer services. Thank you. Okay, so uh, this is a little more on the facility side. Very excited. It's tired. It's, uh, we, we have our private fiber now, which is huge to have, as you know. Uh, almost completely free, uh, using, uh, our funds, which are tied to our OCS population, which allows us to get more funding. So the private fiber is in and we went from one to four, one to forty gigs. Uh, so, uh, it's real fast. David, anything you want to add to that? I, I promise you, I'm not a laborer, but it's just.
Yeah, I mean, it was just a, a way for us to go and, uh, the connection between all the campuses now owned by us. And so instead of paying a very high monthly fee to AT&amp;T, then we pay a very low maintenance fee to the company that if there was a fiber break, um, they would maintain it. And like I said, we were able to go from that one gig connection between the campuses to, to forty gig. Um, and be cheaper than what we were spending for the one gig. So, you know.
So it opens up your options. You are, I've opened a lot of schools and built a lot of schools and the hardest part is you're gonna do it. Because typically you don't have private fiber. Your, your only option is gonna bring AT&amp;T in there. And that's the only option. They're super busy. It's not that they don't do a great job. They do. But now we have the options of different vendors competitive pricing. And I think even on the competitive, that it was almost equal to go up a level, uh, due to the, the price comparison, AT&amp;T versus.
Yeah, our, our next step is gonna be to do our internet connection going out. Um, cause that contract's up at the end of this year. So, you know, this really laid the groundwork for that because now we have the increased bandwidth between the campuses. Um, you know, it wasn't going to, doing good to have an increased bandwidth going out. If we only had one gig going to the campus, no matter what we've got going out from over here. So, um, this allows us to, to get that expansion that, that we need to, to increase the speed there.
Heard you talk about a lot, David, and I've always told you, this is the first I've ever seen it implemented. So I know it's in other places, but I'm excited that we have it. I don't know if I'm talking about redundancy, but it's a possibility. But, uh, I'm sorry, uh, refining long-term technology, transportation, facilities plan. Uh, so what I'm talking about there is just the refinement because I did want to, if you guys are awesome. Transportation thing, we're watching those special updates left, right. Uh, there's a lot of things that are up in here and, uh, people just get the right information and press on forward, I think. I think we've got a good handle on things and, and Elizabeth, I'll let you give us an update in just a second. Uh, but again, the facilities specifically, there's some big ticket items that we do have funding for and we can take care of. And so I will be bringing that to you. Monitors effectiveness of district operations against, uh, appropriate benchmarks. And so our strength is our data integration. So when it comes to looking, let's say, budget, you can cross over comparison data from ODS and Skyward and it just makes your budget decisions so much faster. Uh, I'm excited for that to be a part of our, our budget season coming up. Because that, that integration and that speed and efficiency is so important. And we just need to make sure that we're supporting our staff, that they use it to the max. Cause it's a new thing. That's not easy. Growth, ongoing analysis of program effectiveness is needed, uh, multi-year monitor. So we need to have that, we need to have that mapped out. Just more intentionality and more, tremendous work. It's just, it's just the next step. Uh, implements it overseas appropriate administrative procedures. Uh, again, those are just a couple. Uh, we have our facilities published as well. Uh, we will continue to look for structure. And again, it is hard. The structure's difficult, but it's just better, uh, when you're all on the same page. The growth moves student activity accounts to Skyward for enhanced monitoring purposes. That is a very big goal. It's a very big goal. Uh, and so, uh, when we go, uh, this month, this next month and, and we do our site visit, we will be visiting a site, uh, a school, but we're gonna look at some of these specific things. Uh, we, we always try to get the Skyward schools, our size, something we can really, uh, work with. Uh, personnel management. And so strengths, uh, uh, as far as the first one, they're speaking to recruit. And so under strengths, innovative partnerships, absolutely first practical, uh, approach to student teaching. Very excited about that. We're four for four on our signings. It's a long ways from walking in the door in August and having twelve teaching positions open on one campus to four for four. When did we sign? December? Four for four in December, not August. So tremendous work done there. And I thank you all for the effort on that, for the partnerships, uh, for the, the culture on the campuses, uh, because that's what you had to do in, in, in all cases. They were already on your campus. It's like, and they want to stay on your campus. Oh yes, I, I already mentioned a little bit about this on the strength on overseas performance appraisal. I told you about the principals. But also the district level administrative teams, they go through a whole set of process with me as well of measurables and then, uh, we set a little most. Refine district level, uh, administration goal measurable reporting. And so what we're doing, like with any other goal system, we talk through them. It's like, okay, how can we quantify this? And so that's really what we've been focusing on at our goal line. Uh, administrators, a compensation plan and benefits in the black ink there, that stuff that was in the past. Again, back to the theme of the TIA and the heavy lifting. Uh, increased accountability for sure. Hopefully some increased, some substantial increase in, in pay. And, uh, we can throw some basic numbers out there. Uh, on, on the last slide, Chris, when I get to the last slide, I think we'll talk about growth if that's all right, uh, that, that you provided me today. Um, so the TIA is gonna be huge and the one, we're going to visit this place. If we can do my monthly pay periods, I'd like to do it. Can you click me? And we'll just see. There's no guarantee. It's not guaranteed. We're just, it's a goal. Lot of heavy lifting. Staff. Uh, board relations, the weekly newsletters, text messages, phone calls, individual meetings as requested. Collaboratively refining the newsletter. Uh, I, I've got a question in there today and got right on it. It's an important one. Uh, they all work, but, uh, so if you didn't see, I got the response in there. And, and so it's just helpful to be all in one place. And if I can forget this permission, it's not even, it really actually has a look everywhere. Uh, response, uh, uh, timely, uh, and that, and that, that's really the biggest piece of the tool. When I saw the question today, I'm like, how long has it been? Cause I want to check it every day. I just haven't, I gotta, I gotta develop habits and, and I, I haven't checked it every day, but I don't think I've, I've missed a post five more than a day or two. Uh, I will, it's good. It's wonderful. It is really good. Uh, increased fidelity and monitoring, uh, of the FA Q pick. So yeah, I want to make a habit. On the, on the next slide, uh, strengths, and when referring to appropriate supporting materials. Uh, uh, when we bring you, and I know, uh, we said this before, when we, like when we brought the financial intervention plan and said, we try to purposely say, this is where we got this. This is who we talk to. These are the experts we're talking to. Uh, because it's best practices, financial advisors, TASL, TAS, TASM. Uh, my response to David was, has been risk. I mean, we're just not gonna go out there and have to pay. We're gonna make the calls. We're gonna do the very best we can. Growth, develop more uniform process to make recommendations to the board. And that's just for me. And what I'd like to do is work on, uh, in board book, Kelly was a little section in there, uh, on memos that that will be repeated after a year. Uh, and I think that'll help out the process while the board can reference, uh, that memo from me. And again, one place. Uh, interpret supports board policy and, and interpreting and supporting, it has to be out of newsletters. Campus advisory, uh, committees, uh, including, uh, business parent and community members. Uh, we are speaking the message, uh, about community, one common adult voice, uh, focused on student success. Uh, our district executive committee, again, I'm just gonna remind you all of that because it's one of my favorite meetings every week. And we got about fourteen, this whole side is pretty much filled up with administrators. And, uh, uh, principals have a standing invitation, whereas I think you wrote the last one. Uh, and so it's all about transparency and everybody talking about their project. And, you know, you think of whether we, uh, technology's in the middle of everything. Transportation, we just talked about behavior. He's in the room. You see what I'm saying? When we're talking about behavior in an executive meeting, everybody, everybody's in the room and everybody talks about how it impacts them. Uh, Dr. Ferranto recently, uh, we were talking about pre-k, pre-k partnerships. Can I play? Right? Yeah, that's what it's all about. Because child crime is kind of the deal. And so thank you for that. You're willing to say, I want to play too. Put me in that debate. So the heavy lifting on the pre-k, uh, partnership, Dr. Ferranto, I think you got your invite open and we'll be ready to go. Interprets, uh, I'm sorry, growth area, increase opportunities to work with the board and to cultivate positive productive relationships through quality communication at community events. And this may be on another slide. That's what I was talking about the quarterly piece. If we can maybe come up with some signature events. Because that, as long as y'all want to do, I think the virtual is a good signature event. We can work to get more participation in business. Then there's two more slots and it may be on the next slide. But anyway, uh, I have those dates. You'll get this for us. Any questions on that? Community relations, uh, on community relations. Uh, we added this year, Bridget added and Bridget monitors, uh, the new website, contact us button. And, uh, just another avenue for communication. Uh, we have our social media, those other items that you see there that have been placed. So this is the slide I was talking about. So if y'all can just give me some feedback at some point, whatever y'all want to do. We've typically done community, uh, business and community leaders, uh, August, September, uh, virtual, uh, town hall in December. And we have those other two bits. And just to balance it, I don't know, that one of the things that, that I would throw out there, because business and community leaders, it's like, and who else you get, right? It's like, we want to be, we want to get some people here. And what do we say? We're in our end of year publication, we're gonna advertise your business for free. And so that's how we want to get them to come in. Uh, we also have some good involvement from our clergy and our spiritual leaders. So I, I'm not saying do it. I'm saying if that was a demon and whoever else came, that is a group of people who, uh, I was at the athletic banquet, you and I were there, did, uh, at the athletic banquet and all the credit that went to the churches supporting our athletes was tremendous. I call. And, uh, I know anytime I've asked our, our leaders or our community leader, it's a packed house. And so, uh, and I'm sure you came to that, that personal leader. So again, that's not something we have to do, but I'm just thinking if we have to do one in June to balance things so we're not on top of each other. Uh, Chief, I don't know your thoughts, because I always turn to you and say, you can make this, you make this happen and get everybody here. Because you go, I'm here to get everyone here. And that's awesome. And that's what we wanted to do. And so, uh, just if you would think about that. Uh, mechanisms for community and business involvement and the school encourages participation. Uh, the chamber of board activities and, and some of those that almost all should have been in the black text. A lot of that is ongoing. But nonetheless, uh, it's purposeful. Uh, uh, those are the other opportunities along with some of our LSG that we're doing. Uh, I'm hoping we'll get another shot at the education alliance. Uh, I'm hoping they'll, I'll, I'll mention that big image. I really enjoyed that one. And I really like to, like we did with Hudson with HVAC and maybe with TAC. We really want to plug in with the businesses and just a straight partnership that I just, I see that as being the next one. Um, the last one on this page, work with other governmental entities. Uh, the city of Bay City, I was invited to their comprehensive, uh, needs assessment. I've been to the CDC's, uh, needs assessment and I did that with the student leaders. We did their exact SWOT analysis. It was fun. So I stole that from them. Really love that. We did that with leadership as well as SWOT analysis. And so that has been fun to be a part of that and to develop new proficiencies. Uh, this year I'm focusing, uh, on YMC A. Uh, so I'm sorry, Trent, I can't be with you at the Vice Festival. Are you excited about that? It's a good job. It's a good job. And I was always gonna say, it's like, oh, guess what, buddy? You go here. Let me go back to the other slide. See that heavy? Yeah, eight seven, there I was. I stepped into that one. Uh, so, uh, uh, that, that, that really has been a lot of fun and I really enjoyed the chamber and going to the business openings and things I've had. It's really fun. Uh, this is, uh, only the last slide. Uh, I'll go back. Okay, so, uh, the capstone of this is how does it all fit together? We talked about heavy lifting. We talked about how TIA is gonna be a big part of what we do. We want to attract teachers from everywhere. Uh, yeah, there's substantial funding. I don't feel like you may have them memorized at, at the numbers, at the exemplary, uh, the master's exemplary. Uh, and at the lowest level, uh, fifty-five, sixty and sixty-five percent growth. Is that correct? So what this data is showing, and this is from, uh, our data system, uh, D-MAC. This is showing each grade level for reading and that, what their growth was overall. So what you'll imagine is, and this is not official data, I mean, there's, uh, Chris and his team, they're gonna make a capture this year. So next year we'll be pulling this data and we already have teachers that are making, uh, spreadsheets to calculate where they are. And so I'm excited to hear that discussion and, and I hope, I, I'm excited to celebrate this teachers being a, a big check, uh, especially if you get to that, you get to that master's level at high school. Any questions on that? We're gonna make a closing statement as it were. Are we good? Anything we want to add? We good? Yeah, thank you all. Let's do a print talk about all the great things you did. Right, I love it. How about that? Good job. Thank you. Questions?
There was, I'm looking, I'm following along in board book. One slide, I don't know if you went over. Slide administration management. Did you, did I miss that?
I
Did you go? Okay, so I must've been off on a slide. No worries.
Yeah, and I was going back and forth.
That's okay. My fault.
Thank you for that remark. Thank you. Now let's go. All right, uh, any questions at all? Any comments?
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Mack? So this is the information that we will use for the superintendent evaluation that's, that we will officially do in February, but we'll have a workshop. I know we've put some dates out to see when we can do a superintendent evaluation workshop between now and the next regular, or the meeting, which is February eighteenth, I think, if my memory is correct. And I know since we pushed this meeting back. Uh, so I have a good set, some dates, um, trying to get that workshop in once we have it kind of set in stone. Uh, if you can make sure that's on your calendar, so you will be there because it's that's when we actually do the evaluation, fortunately. Uh, are there any questions about the evaluation? I gave everybody one. This evening, it follows along with this state of the district. Uh, and then like you said, they'll send this out with a couple of hyperlinks. Some of them do, the hyperlinks do, um, the ones that are currently in there do work. So, uh, I, whenever that gets out, if y'all will just fill this out. For those that have not done this, this is filled out each by each of us individually. And then we come together in a workshop and collaborate to fill one out. And then we attach all of our individuals so that we can see the feedback uh, in the comments for each one of us. Are there any questions about superintendent, superintendent evaluation? Anything of that nature? Alright, moving on. Thank you for your work on that. And thank you to all the work that y'all do. I know it'd be, Doc, thank you, but thank you for, for the day in and day out, the heavy lifting of it, every single thing that y'all do. It is a lot. And I know your team's still a lot as well. So, thank y'all. Alright, moving to our consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove? And if not, is there a motion to be made? Alright, is there a second to the motion? Alright, we have a second. Uh, any conversation questions? Hearing none? All in favor? I opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Alright, we will at this time convene into close session, sorry, closed session under personal matters if necessary. They have taken it to closed session for student of Texas government code five five one dot zero seven four, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, resignation, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including contract recommendations for campus and district level administrators and teachers. We will move into closed session eight thirteen.
We'll reconvene, reconvene into open session at eight forty-four discussing consider approval of hiring for contractual personnel. Is there a motion to be made? During that, we'll keep moving. Adfirmment. Is there a motion to be made?
I've got a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion? A second. All right. Any further questions?
We don't need to approve the personnel.
No, there was no Dr. Mack. That's where it's all Dr. Mike.
Our producer, the team.
Yeah. Done. Yes. Please check your calendar for the workshop, the twelfth or the thirteenth, which I think the thirteenth we're out, the twelfth. And then our team of the eighth, we will revisit that hopefully at the beginning of, or in March and be able to get that on the calendar. So, anything else?
Can the teammate, will that be part of our team?
Yes, yes. All right. And thank you for all of the board stuff. It was very stupid of Dr. Mike and your team. And thank you schools and principals. We appreciate it. Yes, sir. All right. All in favor of adjournments? Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We will adjourn this meeting at eight forty-six. Okay. I need...